Go ahead and everybody's here except for Sarah. Oh no, she's not gonna be here today. So we're gonna call it the order and the first item is we have an addendum to the closed session. The motion to add it.
What is?
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
We don't typically do that for closed session but since this came up today we thought we'd add it.
It's good.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Flavins?
Aye.
Chairperson Shapasky?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Alright. It's been added. Next item of business is closed meeting. Be it resolved Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711. Discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. One, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Two, Social Services Board. Three, Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport Authority. Four, Personnel. And five, Economic Development Authority. Is there a motion?
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'm in circles.
Ms. Flavins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chairperson Shapasky?
Aye.
Six ayes.
We are in closed session.
Uh, on the session.
Second. Give motion in a second. Any discussion? I'm Secretary.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Figs.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next item is certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Is there a motion?
Set it.
Say.
Right. Any discussion? I'm Secretary.
Ms. Figs.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski.
Aye.
Chair for Chakaski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next item is our pledge in moment of silence and county administrator will lead us.
We can rise for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next item is fire and rescue service awards, which we will be taking little walk to.
Yes, sir. At this point in time, we're going to walk down to the lobby area between the treasurer and commissioner's office. Our honorees are meeting us there and our folks will be presenting awards to them this evening. And then we'll come back up here. So in that direction. In that direction.
Next item, which is public hearings. And the first public hearing is fiscal year 22 budget amendment.
Here, this is required by law anytime we have proposed amendment that exceeds more than 1% of the total expenditures. In this case, we are appropriating Montgomery County Public Schools fiscal year 21 year in operating fund carryover purchase order balances later in the agenda. So required to hold a public.
All right, well, anybody is here to speak on this topic of the fiscal year 22 budget amendment. Give you four minutes if you come forward and give us your name and your address. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close that public hearing. Next public hearing is to amend chapter eight, article three erosion and sediment. Sections eight dash sixty two, eight dash sixty four, eight dash seventy one, eight dash seventy three, and eight dash seventy five.
This evening, we have finance director Gibson and general services director Woodrum. They're going to tag team on this presentation. Let's see, like Emily's going to be first up.
We had a ratio issue with our sharing last time. We're trying to prevent that from happening. Josh is guiding us. Tonight, we do have three hearings listed, but we're going to do one staff presentation. And as Craig mentioned, I'm actually only going to talk for just one second before Scott gets into the specifics with you. There are three different hearings because there are three separate sections of the code. We're going to touch both erosion, sediment control subdivisions, and zoning. And the purpose of these amendments is basically for clarity, both for staff and for the citizens. And I will sort of just dovetail into that and say, we did adopt a model ordinance. And Scott's going to talk a little bit about the history of our stormwater program here in Montgomery County. But the model ordinance from the state didn't talk at all about how this fits in with your subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance. And so what we're doing today is really trying to work on some consistency. So that when they're in one department, they don't get direction that won't work for them when they're in another department. And it's also going to work on a little bit of a mindset shift to be thinking about stormwater on the front end more. And then as we work on the clarity, we'll also update our administrative documents. And so while the code, we'll still read like code language, the administrative documents that we use with the citizens will have flow charts and easy to read things so that they know what to expect from one step to the next. And of course, we always strive to comply with code of Virginia, so we have a little bit of cleanup there. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Scott and he's going to walk you through the details on the NS and stormwater.
I was going to remind you, Emily, that you're one second, so.
Can't take it back.
And yeah, and I think we do need to clarify that to anyone here that's here to speak on any of these. We're doing all three of them together. So when we're done with this, then we'll go ahead and take the public comments.
Good evening, everyone. Yep, good evening. Thank you for having me. I appreciate Emily opening up that slide there about the model ordinance that was adopted in 2014. So to go into some of the history, in 2004, well, let's go back a little further than that. In 1973, the Virginia NS law was adopted and was passed to prevent the unreasonable degradation of properties, stream channels and waters and other natural resources. And then that, that was under the responsibility of DCR. And throughout the years, it transitioned to the Department of Environmental Quality. And then in, in, in 2004, the Virginia General Assembly consolidated the programs within DCR, directed the DCR to update the stormwater regulations. And then following that is when DEQ came up and took over the program. So in 2014, Montgomery County began administering the program, which we refer to as a VSMP, the Virginia Stormwater Management Program, at the direction of the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. And we adopted, as Emily referred to earlier, the model ordinance language based on a template provided by DEQ at that time. And so today, based on some input that we've received from the development community and with staff evaluation, we are proposing several amendments to the ordinance. And it, all the way from definitions to text cleanup and things like that. And it's outlined in the documents that has been provided to you. And we can break it down and answer any specific questions if you'd like. But just want to talk about some of the, highlight some of the things that's being covered in a broad sense. Common plan of development is a popular movement. And that refers to, in a nutshell, different properties. If you think from a subdivision standpoint, lots are built on and homes are constructed at different times. So the, there's common plan of development language that, and definitions that have been delegated from the EPA down to the state, to the EQ, and then the EQ to us. And so we've aligned and corrected that definition as, as well as others. And then lot grading, our current ordinance requires lot grading at the time a subdivision is submitted. So that, that's a bit challenging for some of the larger lot subdivisions because the developer or the builder doesn't know exactly how the home is going to be oriented on the lot, which side of the lot the driveway is going to come in, or if it's going to have a detached garage or that type of thing, or a pool. I'll have an example of that in a moment. So it's, it, it's, it's details that at the time a subdivision is submitted, the developer may not know. So we want to provide a little flexibility through these changes as well. We are not making any of the, any of the code any more strict. We're, we're not doing that. We're trying to provide some flexibility where we can. And then, and that lot grading rolls over into the construction of single family detached structures. And clarify, give us an opportunity to clarify when an agreement in lieu of a plan, whether it be NS or an agreement in lieu of a plan for stormwater is appropriate. And we address concept stormwater management plans. And the intent is to demonstrate feasibility for the developer and engineer, for them to demonstrate the feasibility of accommodating stormwater. And as well as for planned unit development. And we'll see that that's covered under the last section. So as we look at who's involved, we've, you know, in the end, it's, it's the citizens of the county that are, are the ultimate customer. And so whether it's upstream development in the subdivision, I'll show you one here in just a minute. So that we're trying to have, be as forward thinking as possible with, with evaluating stormwater early on. And then provide some clarity for the developers and the builders and engineers and the development community. And then for those that administer the regulations from an enforcement standpoint, plan review, permit issuance. So we have an example here of this lot to the left, a home to the left. You notice that there's a ditch that was graded to the, to the left side there. And there was a property owner, the builder went to that property owner at the time and said, hey, I'd like to grade that. I'd like to grade a ditch. And that property owner said, sure. And then it changed hands and a new property owner came along. As you can see, the channel stabilized there. A new property came along, new property owner, and they built their house. And they said, oh, wait a minute. They pick up the phone and they call the county and say, hey, what can you do about the ditch that's straining on my property from my neighbor? So in, in, with this particular example, and they added a pool. The neighbor, the first builder added a pool or property owner, is defining those drainage channels and those swales across properties that ultimately are going to, somebody has to be the, the last builder. Someone has to be the last resident, the last homeowner. And so looking out for those type of situations the best we can. And this was a subdivision that fell in between that 2004, 2014 window where the, the county wasn't involved in as much stormwater review as any. So the other challenge we have are, are strip subdivisions along existing state maintained roadways. In this particular example, we have the railroad at the top and we have an existing secondary road across the bottom of the screen. And as development comes, we have a person who's subdivided. And we have, if you notice here, we have driveways across other properties. And the fortunate thing about the way this land lays is it tends to sheet flow from the railroad down to the secondary road. And then there's a, a larger channel off the screen at the bottom. And so working with the developers and applying the overall concept plan and strategies for addressing stormwater in a more traditional subdivision, like in the first example where you have roads, water lines, sewer, that type of thing, versus something on a, on a, on a, an existing secondary road where there's going to be multiple entrances on an existing state maintained. So we're trying to provide some flexibility in these particular cases. So we just recap some of the benefits a little bit. We have providing clarity between the processes of land subdivision and subsequent land disturbance. And minimizing the conflicts when lots are developed at different times by different owners. That takes us back to the definition of common plan of development. And we want to promote evaluating the feasibility of managing stormwater as early as possible. And provide logical coordination between the code sections with the subdivision section between the NS section and the subdivision section so that we can provide continuity and direction to the developers and engineers. And then as Emily mentioned in the beginning, coordination between the rezoning and S U P process and plat approval. Again, bringing issues to the front of a project when there is more flexibility. So again, a recap of things we want to cover with these amendments and changes to the ordinance. We strengthen the county code. We want to align our administrative documents with, with the regulations and, and the code of Virginia. And we want to provide, we want to ensure that our program, although it's in its infancy and we've, we've received positive reviews from the Department of Environmental Quality, we want to make sure that we're in compliance with the code.
Yes, please.
So as we mentioned earlier, there are three different sections, two of those zoning and subdivisions. As you know, the planning commission has to have a here. As you know, the planning commission has to have a hearing on and give you a recommendation before your hearing. So we combined all three because it was very logical, as you just heard from Scott, to do them all together instead of trying to strip them and do them separately. The commission's hearing was last week. We had no members of the public to speak. We did our typical advertisement as well as posting the full information on our website. We may have members here to speak this evening. The commission did motion to recommend approval to you of the three ordinances. Unanimously, we had five members present, three were absent, and we still have a vacancy there on the commission. We did talk a little bit about the age of our program and how stormwater in Montgomery County is different than stormwater in the towns. And so we have taken a slower approach, but it is meant to be more context sensitive because development in the county is much different than development in the town. And so we hope that this explains a little bit about just the few tweaks that we're trying to do to take that into consideration. That's all that I have.
That's it.
And Scott, we'll be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Don't think we have any questions.
Thank you.
Sure, if I could just add, I want to thank Scott and Emily both for the work they've done on this. There's a lot of input. And stormwater is one of those areas that you're never going to make everybody happy when it comes to development. But I do think you did a, staff did a good job getting the cross-section of opinions and concerns. And I think Scott mentioned in his presentation, we have been recognized by the Department of Environmental Quality. It was having a very good program. These are just steps that we want to take to make it even better.
All right, thank you. We will now hear from anyone who would like to come forward and speak on these three amendments, Chapter Eight, Article Three, Chapter Eight, Article Four, and Chapter Ten zoning. If anyone would like to come forward, we don't have anybody that has signed up to speak. But if anybody would like to come up to speak on these three, you would have four minutes, just need to state your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close all three. All right, next item up is public address. Now, public address is where citizens get to come forward and tell us, give us information that you think is pertinent. You get four minutes. We don't have anyone that has signed up for public address. But if you would like to come forward, you get four minutes and just give us your name and address. Is there anyone? Yes, ma'am. Come up to the podium.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for speaking. My name's Bernadette Monday. I reside at 2655 Big Falls Road, Blacksburg. It's down in McCoy, down on the river. Excuse me. I debated about speaking tonight or not, but I figured I'd better because this is the last chance. I own New River Junction and have owned it for the last 40 years. So my husband Dave started that business 40 years ago when he saw the issue down there. I don't know how many of you are old enough to remember cars parked on both sides of the road, emergency vehicles not being able to get through. It was a mess down there. And it's taken 40 years to back everybody up, get them to park on our property. We won't do business with anybody who's not parked there. Because if they go down the road, they're going to get on the road, block up the road. It's a big issue. So I debated on speaking tonight because it seems self-serving. I own a campground. These folks are trying to open a campground. Quite frankly, that doesn't bother me. Montgomery County needs more campgrounds. We turn people away constantly because we're very small. And if this business does go through, it probably would help my business. People would come down and go tubing. My concern and the concern of my neighbors is there is no public access down there. So people that come to this place and want to get on the river, where are they going to go? Are they going to be cutting through people's yards? Are they going to recreate the problem that we worked so hard to get rid of? And it, it's just frustrating. And I know Norris Run very well. And if I go off Big Falls Road and take that right turn up to Norris Run, you always earn fear of a head-on collision there. I don't care what size vehicle you're in. It's just a tough turn to make. We're concerned that people are going to end up on our property because they've gone the wrong way. They don't know where to go. They don't know how to get there. And, and they're going to be frustrated. But once again, my concern is that section of the river, there is no public access. And I'm worried about a problem coming back that we worked so hard to get rid of. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else that would like to come and speak during a public address? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public address. Next item is the end of, any more? Okay, no, with end of. Next item up is the items of consent, your motion. You have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Levin?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Jeffery Shigawski?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Our next item up under old business ordinance, special use permit, campground, recreational vehicle, and forty camp.
Staff doesn't have a, a presentation this evening, but the applicant is here and would like to share some information.
Good evening to you all. We just want to take a few minutes to address some of the concerns brought up last time and, and tonight, and just run through them and tell you why we, we think this is an idea that needs to happen in Montgomery County. One of the concerns brought up last time was the thought that the roads were too narrow going down, going down Norris Run and Lick Run. So one of the things we did is we took a Class B RV and a Toyota Tundra. We went down the road and we were like, all right, are there any issues anywhere passing each other going down? We took some pictures of these. We found no issues at all. There's plenty of room between these. And I'm like, all right, what about a Class C RV and a Class B RV? See if there's any issues there. And again, we did not see any issues with these. So I'll show you a few images. So this was about the narrowest spot on Norris, Norris Run that, that we found. And there's still plenty of room passed. And even if something like a large farming equipment was going down there and you needed to get up, there was plenty of room on each side to get a wheel off if there was something extremely large going down there. But as you can see everywhere else, there's plenty of room down, up and down both roads. Here it is again with Class CRV. So this is a, just over 26 foot Class C. The largest Class C that we would allow on the campground is 30 foot Class C to give you kind of perspective of, of where this size fits in. Another thing that we did was we wanted to see, okay, so if there is something extremely large going down the road and you're coming down with a Class CRV, is, would you have any issue anywhere along these roads getting over? So we went and pulled off in all of the areas that we could. There were two sections that we thought that there would be the only spot where you couldn't pull over. It's where there were like 50-foot sections of guardrails on both sides of the road on Lick Run. But it was also one of the widest spots on Lick Run, so we don't think that there's an issue there. Here's a map of all the spots where you could, hard to see on here, but all the peak areas where you could be completely off of the road with a RV. And then all of these were areas where you could easily get off on everything except for two of your tires. Now, all these spots in between, except like I said, there's one spot down here on Lick Run. And I think it's somewhere in here. Everywhere else you could get tires off to the side. There's a little shoulder there where you can get tires off if absolutely needed. But again, I don't think it's needed. Here's some pictures of us. It's a little dark on that screen, but you know, all the different spots. We actually had, I think, like 35 pictures. And then we're like, we can't share all those pictures. Here's just some of them to show, you know, be able, easily being able to get off to the side. Another concern was that the trees can hang low over the road. And on Norris Run, we, we didn't really see that as an issue anywhere on Lick Run. But on Norris Run, there were a few spots where the trees hang relatively low. The Class BRV that we took out there is nine feet, six inches tall. And it didn't rub anywhere except for one spot. And then this is driving as close as we could to the, to brush. But potentially taller vehicles could rub against some branches. We see a potential solution. You know, if, if VDOT can't commit to trimming the trees in those low areas, that's something that we could do. And I think that would be both a service to people who live on the road and also the bus drivers that go down there, the UPS trucks. Concern brought up last time was that there wasn't cell coverage on the road. And you know, there could be, I don't know, some issues if someone broke down, they wouldn't be able to call for help. So we drove both Lick Run and Norris Run and also walked the property to measure cell coverage. And we found that yes, right at the entrance, when you get down low on that, that section of Norris Run, the cell coverage does run out. But as soon as you walk, we were up, you know, 50 feet from the road on the drive and the elevation starts to come up, we had cell coverage again there. So we looked at, all right, well, what would be some potential solutions? One, we could install, you know, a landline there so that would be available for people and we could have that information down there. So you know, anyone passing by had a breakdown down there. They could walk up and use the, the phone for emergency use. We could put cell boosters. And we think that cell boosters could reach all the way down to the edge of the property on Norris Run. And these solutions would have benefited not just the people visiting the campground, but also any, you know, anyone in the public going down there. And it would also help the emergency responders because now it wouldn't take as long to get responses. Here's a quick map of the property. We just walked it. So you know, way down here at the entrance, there was, there was no cell coverage. But everywhere else on the property, there was cell coverage. And in fact, my daughter uses Mint Mobile and I took her T-Mobile. It's a T-Mobile connection, which usually has horrible cell coverage in this area. And we went out there and as you get up, surprisingly enough, she got four bars of T-Mobile up here, which is better than we get at home. And then we drove the roads and, you know, deep down in Norris Run down here, you do lose cell coverage on the road. But as you drive up, you know, we stopped and checked our coverage Verizon, got, you know, two bars here. And T-Mobile didn't have connection, but you know, most cell companies allow emergency phone calls to go off another carrier. So that's what it said on the phone the entire time we were driving. It's like emergency calls only on the T-Mobile phone. So today, if there's an accident on the lower Norris Run, that means that someone either needs to walk to higher elevation on someone's private property or they need to find a house with a landline to report anything. So this will make it safer in that area. There will be better access for cell coverage for all users going up and down that road. A camp post will be higher up in the mountain to report any emergencies. There's views of Brush Mountain on both sides of the river. They can report any, you know, forest fires on those. And also on the property, we would have roads that emergency vehicles could, could access if there was ever a fire coming over the backside of Brush Gap Mountain or on any adjacent properties, they could easily get up. Last time, someone brought up a concern of if they're passing, if someone misses the turn to the campground going down Norris Run, that they would have no spot to turn around before the railroad tracks down there. And there's actually a really large turnaround. We were told that this turnaround was placed in down there for a school bus to turn around so that they didn't have to go down. But I don't know if that's true, but that's what we've heard. But it's a huge paved turnaround. And another concern we've heard is that, you know, people don't want more people down at the river. And where we have trouble with that is, so this is the cover of the Montgomery County Board of Tourism website. And this is McCoy Falls. And they have this description on there like, oh, you should go down to McCoy Falls and, you know, use the river there for the day. And it seems like the county tourism is really promoting, trying to draw visitors down to that area. And so we think there's a lack of infrastructure down there. And actually, our campground can help with that. I don't know if you guys have ever driven down Big Falls Road and people are camping right on the river down there. You know, this could help get some of those people off of the river in, in a campground instead. And we agree, we don't want to have people go down and park. We think it's a great idea for people, to tell people, hey, and we can put this in our information. It's like, if you want to go down to the river, go down to New River Junction. Go park down there, use the river with them. Please don't go down there and drive. I think we can be part of the solution instead of part of that problem. Just one last thing on here. And I think more people are going to be going down to the river, you know, 5,000 more students. Tech's trying to enlarge, you know, 5,000 more students going there. And then the current, the surrounding areas continuing to grow down there. So I think just more people are going to be going to the river and they just need more infrastructure down there to be able to avoid parking along the river. So one of the thoughts last time was that, you know, the search and rescue team capability down there. And they're backed up by Blacksburg Search and Rescue, so it shouldn't be a capability issue. Some of the potential solutions we had was giving river safety information in our check-in information. We'd also be willing to allow our event spaces to be used by the McCoy Long Shot for training for fire and rescue, first aid, that kind of thing. So that, you know, that there could be additional benefits going to the fire rescue down there. So the railroad crossing, we, we touched on this before, but we agree that's not a, a good crossing at all for RVs or trailers or really any cars. We don't want people coming to our campground that way at all. Our website and booking will direct all guests to arrive and depart from Norris Run, Lick Run. We will put a sign at our exit directing all RV and trailer truck away from that crossing. We'd be willing to pay for signs to be added at that crossing to, to try to minimize traffic on that. One of the things brought up last time was, you know, we said we're having up to 40 cabins. And then so supervisor Biggs, you had brought up like, oh, 40 camp, 40 cabins with four, four bedrooms in it. And that's not what we're going for. So this was included in our original concept plan. And we don't, we envisioned only And we don't, we envisioned only having two uh four bedroom cabins. Most of the cabins, as you can see, uh eight by twenty-one, a hundred and sixty-eight square feet. I mean, we're looking at really small cabins on this, really kind of rustic. Um, when we, before we uh put an offer on the land, we wanted to make sure that. Our idea was uh kind of lock and step with the um, with what the county wanted. So um. You know, most of the recreation um that the tourism. Uh, office has for a camp, for camping and hiking and all this stuff. They talk about. Over in the Poverty Creek Trail System and they talk about McCoy Falls. So when we, we were like, all right, we looked at the the plans and we said, this seems to be where the county wants this kind of development. And when we went through the comprehensive plan, we're like, it it looks like the county wants to support this kind of uh idea and in this kind of area. This is from the tourism board and uh again, you know, the waterways have got um McCoy Falls here. Um, and then they have this camping park section and you click on that and they don't currently list any camping spots in there. If you click on everything else, they they have all these things and there is a lack of camping infrastructure in Montgomery County. And it's um funny enough, when you, when you click through here, you click on the hiking and biking section, they talk about biking there, uh biking in. The Poverty Creek Loop Trails and stuff. Um, and they have this kind of a day in Montgomery County. And it tells the story of a family and they're camping um at Clayton Lake, which is not even in the county. And this is on the tourism board, um, or the tourism office website. So we think there's just an opportunity to meet the demand that the county clearly is putting out there as needed. Uh, and we'd like to be, you know, part of that solution. And we think it's in the area that also seems to be promoted by the county. They want to increase the tourism, but we think the infrastructure needs to exist to win, to meet that increased tourism. So this is onward NRV. They're also trying to promote bringing people to the area. So McCoy Falls, this is the New River. McCoy Falls is about right here. The property that we are talking about is right up here. I mean, it's clearly an area that people trying to attract people to this area are focusing on. This is the um, they put out a video for the New River Valley and this is their starting screen for it. And the property we're talking about is right, right there. Um, the last thing we wanted, or one of the last things we want to talk about was the economic development and tax revenue also from this. Um, you know, we're going to be investing several million dollars uh over the life of this project of this local contractors uh and local and regional suppliers. Um, you know, we have an estimate of of revenue, which we think um then there will be a significant tax revenue for the county there as well. Um, this campground will bring dollars to the region that are currently being spent in other counties. I'm planning a mountain bike trip with some friends right now and um. There's not the kind of camping in the, in the county that we can come here. We are actually looking to go to outside of Harrisonburg. Um, for this trip. So it's just a shame that that money can't be spent here in the local. Um, not just that, but when all these tourists come in, they help support a lot of other local businesses. And so, you know, I don't need to go through all of these, but there's just, it's not just going to one place, it's going to the broader. Community. There's a lot of community support for this project. We talked to these organizations after the concerns. We told them the concerns. That uh were brought up and we still got letters of support and I have them here tonight and we've sent you guys copies from the New River Land Trust. Friends of the Huckleberry Bike US or MS, the New River Valley Bike Association, and Poverty Creek Trails Coalition. And that was just in the last week of talking to these organizations. Uh, so just to kind of recap, um. We feel that this is the type of a type of project the county appears to want in all of their plans, the the comp plan, tourism offers, onward NRV. Um, no public funding would be needed for this and it's going to help meet so many of the county goals. Uh, we think it'd be a great source of tax revenue. Um, and tourist dollars will help support the local economy and business. So just to leave it, we think this is the right project at the right time and the right location to help promote the tourism and economic development in the county. Um, and in order for the tourism part that the county is, is really trying to promote, in order for that to take off, you need the infrastructure. And you need the infrastructure where the recreating, the outdoor recreation is happening and it's happening in uh up and down Norris Run, down to the river. Thank you.
Uh, does anyone have any questions for the groups? Thank you, sir.
I think.
All right, discussion? Been a while. Is there a motion for uh the uh? The ordinance for the special use permit? Right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second it so we can discuss it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will discuss.
Supervisor Shepherd. Several issues, I think. Um, after the EMS guy was here last week and spoke. And I talked to several people who live down in there and they're worried to death about that railroad crossing. They say, no, that that's what's going to happen. Those campers. Uh, I have a friend that owns property right next to your property. And he wanted me to tell you to get ahold of him because he had some ideas. I can tell you what one of his ideas was and it might make sense to you, I don't know. Um, is just to do cabins and tents. Uh, and not have any, at least trailers of any kind, because I think that's where the issue is going to be. One of the guys that lives down there come to me and said, I pulled or went to pull campers and trailers off of that railroad track. And when I got there, the train had already took them off for them. So it's just, it's a bad situation. It's a great idea. It's just, I wish it was better. I wish the setup was better along the river and it's not. And it's just, I just don't think it's accessible for a bunch of people. And I know they're coming and I don't know what we do about it, but. I, I can't, right now I can't support it like this.
Supervisor DeMons.
Um, I wonder if that could be resolved, that concern, because it is a valid one. Um, so in the documents that are associated with this. Um, the applicant did say that a full-time camp host will be on site during the peak season. And I wonder if that concern can be resolved with communication. So if there's only thirty permitted RV sites, that is not a lot of people to, if you have an employee that's hosting the camp. That's not a lot of people to get in touch with and reach out to and say, you cannot come this way. You will get stuck. And at a certain point, I know it burdens uh the railroad. I know it burdens firing EMS. And if somebody gets their camper stuck, if they've been adequately notified, they also have some personal responsibility as well. And I don't know that. We can necessarily. Uh, I don't know that we can necessarily completely remove that risk. And I don't know that that is also fully on the, the shoulders of the applicant. On whether or not to approve a rezoning request for a very, um, I think necessary. Addition to Montgomery County's tourism um offerings. So I'm, I'm wondering if, if that is a communication piece that could resolve that concern. Instead of a reason to vote against a rezoning. And I know that it's hard to answer that question.
You can answer, yeah, I don't, I don't know. There's multiple issues and I don't know how you fix it.
Supervisor Love.
Well, I do agree that it is a great idea and the concept, and it is something that the county would want to promote for tourism. But I went down there, did not have good cell service, took pictures. Um, when we first went there, before we got to where we didn't have cell service and um for location, the GPS gave us the coordinates to come through that railroad crossing. And I've dealt with people, you can tell people five hundred times, you can't do this, you can't do this. There's always going to be the few that. Don't listen. Um, and of course, that's not going to be, you know, it is the um. Is the campground going to be responsible because they, they've done everything proactive as they could and someone still didn't listen. But then that burden is going to be placed on our EMS to be able to respond. Um, and then block traffic and then if the, the train comes through and and does hit that, so I have a concern, especially after hearing our EMS. Um, chief or captain, I might not have this, uh, tell us that he has some real concerns with that, answering that. I do think the applicant has um gone above trying to accommodate with uh the cell towers and things, because that would be an issue. But in an emergency, someone happened to go knock on somebody's house in the middle of the night. Um, trying to travel to get to a landline. I don't know how many people have landlines anymore um for that. Um. I, I do have some major concerns. Um, there are several, I think, seven or eight one-lane bridges there that you will have to pull off. Um, if, if the weather's bad and they're soft shoulders, what happens if they get, they pull off and get stuck? And then you have to have big tow trucks to come and move that out. Um, it is, as um we've heard about from New River Junction and also been there, um, I know that uh people are going to want access to that river. I mean, that's one of the drawing points of why we, why people would want to go there. Obviously, we see that beautiful river there. Um, so their issue of uh where they're going to park, accessibility to that. Um, so I do have concerns for our EMS, cell service, the road conditions. Um, it is a great idea, but the infrastructure is not there. Road concerns, cell service, emergency response.
Supervisor King. Please cheer, Biggs.
Well, my problem has been the road problem and then the EMS, but I love the idea and I think it's needed. Um. I was sort of thinking about what Daryl said too. I don't know if this would be a project that um could be possibly scaled back a little bit to. You know, if the, if the problem seems to be the RVs, then. That seems to be where the concern is on the road as far as I can. And I've been on that road lots of times. It's, yeah. So um, I'm sort of torn about it right now. I feel like um, I really like the project and I think that like. Um, Supervisor Love and said, I think the applicants have gone beyond what, you know. You would expect them to do and you try to address all of the, the problems, but the road is what concerns me with the RVs. Um. I guess there's no way to guarantee that people wouldn't come the wrong way, but.
Here's an example I'll give you.
Okay.
You remember the, the hairpin turn down Mount Taber Road, the tractor trailers? There's still tractor trailers getting screwed up there and there's signs and. Just, they just don't, everybody does this. Can't stand it, they gotta do it.
Yeah, uh, I'm with a lot of you on this one. Uh, I think the. Put a campground there is an excellent idea. I, I, I really like the whole project concept, but. As someone that's actually worked fatal crashes on railroad grade crossings, um, they're, they're merciless. So it really doesn't matter if it was somebody that made a poor decision driving his camper or poor signage or whatever. Uh, it really doesn't matter at that point because you've got a big mess and uh. You certainly don't want to encourage that, but on the other hand, on the other side of that, you know, that's, that's a choice people make, so uh. That's, that's a tough one. But I, I love the project idea. Um, I'm a little bit concerned when we have uh EMS comes to us and says, hey. This is not going to work. Uh, several things that I heard tonight, I really liked. I really liked some of the suggestions you made. But they're nowhere in these conditions. Correct, Emily? The, the conditions of the uh. Cell phone boosters and um signage on state highway and.
They're not currently in the conditions. The board could certainly add them.
So a lot of that stuff uh was very encouraging, but we still have to deal with the traffic and uh that's the one. Um, I don't know if um you all have talked to anybody at VDOT about what it takes to put signs up. Um, but it's not a, it's certainly not a quick fix, that's for sure. Uh, that would take some time, some planning. But you would absolutely have to have some signage several, in several locations. To make absolutely sure that once somebody gets to a certain point, they're at the point of no return. And that, that's on that railroad crossing, that's not a good thing.
And that's not just trailers, long vehicles too. This can't go, that's why, let's just don't go all the way through.
Absolutely.
Um, actually, I'm going to say a lot of things. Um, first, on the subject of cell service, while I do understand it being a reasonable concern. It's not the applicant's responsibility to provide cell service and their offering solutions. And so I think to consider cell service as part of a land use application for a rezoning as a reason to vote against it. I don't think that that's fair to a property owner or somebody interested in purchasing a property. Um, with the one-lane bridges on Norris Run, those are beyond the location of the proposed campsite. And the applicant has proposed to bring traffic up Big Lake to Norris Run. They would never get to those one-lane bridges. They're, they're saying that what they want to do is direct people to come in an entirely different route, so they're not coming that direction on Norris Run at all. Um, I would like to point out that the planning commission unanimously recommended, yes, after uh two public or two. Opportunities to hear the, from the applicant and also to have a public hearing. Um, they did recommend it with um some pretty. Um, restrictive RV uh restrictions. Um, limiting the size of our RVs uh to Class As and fifth wheel not being permitted at all. Class C campers would uh be restricted to thirty feet or less and travel trailers would be restricted to twenty-five feet or less. Um, and again, just with the, the railroad crossing. We can do everything we can, like we've done with the hairpin turn on, on um partying to prevent. People from making a decision, but we cannot prevent everybody, when given full information, from making a stupid decision. Um, and I, I don't know that it's necessarily fair to burden. A land purchaser or, you know, an applicant um who's going above and beyond to um mitigate for that. We have some pretty substantial letters of support um from community groups that are very active in developing our outdoor tourism. That have um from volunteer groups that have been very active in developing and promoting our regional tourism assets as well as. Um, paid staff members of other agencies and those do carry a lot of weight. Um, also, I had the opportunity not only to visit the property, but to hike up the property. Um, which was hard and sweaty and um difficult to do. Um, but as I was driving to the property, um, taking the recommended route. Um, I passed RVs much longer than thirty feet and people's driveways that live there, horse trailers, cattle haulers, other trailers. So people are already using the road with larger vehicles and larger pieces of equipment than what is being proposed uh to be able to. than what is being proposed uh to be able to rent the campsites. UPS trucks are still gonna come up and down that road, school buses are still gonna come up and down that road, so these sized vehicles are using the road anyways. Um, I think if, I'd like to ask Marty, um, if we are not going to be able to move forward, can we actually separate the motion and remove RVs as a permitted use to at least move forward somewhat if we can't seem to get a consensus on the RV portion of the application?
You you could ask the applicant if you will take that out of the equation and then you would put that in the conditions, that would be no.
Okay, and then we could also request that some of the new information that was brought tonight could be
Added in there.
Added in there as a condition of the approval. Okay. I don't think it's um I think that this is very necessary. I think um I am somebody that uses our trails regularly, um uses the river regularly. There there isn't a place for somebody to come and bring their family for a weekend or a week in Montgomery County and set up a site that they can leave their site in the morning and go camping at Poverty Creek, you know, hit the river to do some kayaking and then have a campfire with weenies at night. There isn't somewhere where you can do that here and take a shower. Um, and this is a really unique opportunity to be able to provide that for people to come visit Montgomery County and see not just, you know, Virginia Tech game, but well beyond what our whole area has to offer in terms of outdoor tourism and recreation.
Thank you. Good points.
It's a great idea. There's no doubt about it, and we need it in this county. I'm just not sure we should force the issue, given the situation.
Do you think further discussion with the applicant over a period of time would help?
Well.
What what could help us get to, yes?
I think if we do away with the, if we could do away with the RVs, pass it, live with it for a couple of years and see how it goes. I don't know, at some point, maybe they'll fix the railroad cross, I doubt it, but.
Probably not.
How do other EMS would feel better about it, you know?
Can we ask the applicants how they would feel about that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, that would be a good idea. If you would. Um, what is your thought on that?
We're trying to have like a sidebar on your, this is really, um.
In masks.
Right, in masks, um, and trying to be like, well, all right, what do we think? I mean, um. Our initial thought is what if we could further restrict the size of the RV? Because um like a Class B RV is um a van, you know, it's a it's a camper van. I mean, they're um they're not more than, I think, twenty-two feet, um, which, you know, a lot of pickup trucks are longer than that. Um. That is also a real, a growing part of camping is the that Class B camper van. Uh, I mean, there's the whole van life thing and and a lot of the, what we like to promote is um is hiking and biking. That's a big part of um that group, you know, the van life people, I guess. Um, so maybe we could allow Class Bs, um, because they're really not gonna be much different size than a lot of the the cars and trucks that come out there. Um, could we just further restrict Class Cs? They go down to twenty-six feet. That's um a twenty-six foot RV is, it's pretty, it's a pretty small RV.
But a a Class C, many of them sit very close to the road. I mean, they don't have a lot of road clearance on them.
Yeah, but neither does like a um uh, whatever, say ninety-four uh Corolla or, you know, so other cars. Um, I mean, I guess they're a little bit longer, so that.
That's that's the issue.
Yeah, the wheelbase on it.
You're low and you're long, yeah.
Um.
Where specifically?
I think, I mean, our concern is that that's a major part of the market, especially now. Um, and our feasibility studies that we've done up to this point have included them. Um. So we'd have to, I mean, it's hard for us to decide on the fly, um, you know, what that matters.
No, I know that. I I get that and that's not, you don't have to do that.
Yeah.
Have to, you don't have to decide. We just thought we'd ask.
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, we would love to, we would be open.
So you would be open to just restricting to Class Bs and?
Twenty-six feet or less.
That, oh, you're just talking about Class C when you said.
Yeah, I would like, so the twenty-six, yeah, with Class C, um. Yeah, we'd be open to the the Class B. I mean, it's it's definitely not ideal for our model, but but then we'd have to take it back and run our numbers to see if it's even feasible for us to.
Well, um, you know, I'm I'm ju- I'm throwing things out there too. Um, if you did this and then later on decided that you when things or if things improved or if situations appeared not to be as dire as we think they could be, um that would be another application for an SUP, I would say. And that could be something that could be done down the road, but um I'm throwing that out there too.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be the lengthy process, I wouldn't think, if you're trying to amend an SUP. I don't, I wouldn't think it would be the lengthy process that you've been through to this point, this initial SUP.
Uh, yeah.
So there's a lot in this one.
We, I think I could pretty much say, cause I think you've heard it here, we want you to succeed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We want you to succeed. But we're could just, we're just concerned, I mean, I was looking back at the notes at the planning commission, eight people came forward and said they didn't like the idea. They gave reasons, so. And then at our last meeting, we heard from several people, yeah, heard from one tonight. Um, and they do bring up some some valid issues and Supervisor Demonts brought up some valid issues too. How how can we hold uh approval or disapproval based on cell so signal, you know? That's not right. Yeah, that's not right, but a lot of those things that you you you've brought forward, they're not in the conditions right now. So it was great that you put on your thinking caps and got your cameras out there and took pictures. Um, I I think that's that's really good of you to do that because that helps us in our decision, but I think we have a hurdle that we're having a hard time getting over. And um I'm just wondering if maybe we should table this and.
Let that work.
But, yeah, let let you reconsider a few things that you've heard tonight and um.
Well, I mean, I think we would be okay, cause it doesn't sound like there's enough, like just getting the feedback from you all, that it doesn't sound like there's gonna be much room for um that Class C at this point. It didn't, I I'm not hearing that, I don't know. Um, I I mean, is it worth tabling it if if we're still just gonna be talking about Class C, cause I think if if that's the only option on the table and that's what's gonna come up next time, then we'd be fine moving forward now. We can run our model and if we never do this thing because we can't make it work, then we never do this thing. We got the permit and we don't implement it.
I I can't, I can't promise you that.
No, right, but but I'm just saying that.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be six votes made.
I, no, I understand that, uh, but I'm saying, um if from what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like um anything's going to change on your end between now and and another meeting. The only thing that we we would need to do is run our numbers to see if it's worthwhile. We're gonna have to do that anyway, is what I'm saying, so I think our thought is if we can include Class Bs, that's fine, we can, we can move forward with that. Um, you guys can vote on that and then afterwards, we will run our numbers to see. Because just because we have a special use permit does not mean that we have to um implement our product. So, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we will go run our numbers to see if we think we can still make it work.
Supervisor Demont.
So um what I am hearing from the applicant is um an amendment to the motion to restrict RVs to Class Bs only, which would be camper van type RVs. Um, I would like to discuss before moving forward with that amongst us, how everybody feels about amending it. Uh, I'm comfortable with amending the motion, um, but I would like to hear from all of you on if that changes your opinion on.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Um. Yeah, I don't know. You still have the concern of how many people's gonna end up at the river and blocking the road. More to access the river. I guess if you tell them to frequent Miss Monday's uh establishment, that would be a fix, I guess.
Has there ever been a summer that that road wasn't congested?
I've parked on that road east of the river.
Guilty.
I didn't, yeah.
And I might have towed your car one.
I've never had my car towed.
You've never towed my car?
I didn't know, I didn't know that you weren't supposed to, so yeah, guilty as charged. I parked on that road to access the river.
Or maybe there needs to be signage.
I think it presents an opportunity for a a business to business partnership between the applicant and Miss Monday's operation because, gosh, how great is that? I mean, how very cool would that be as a benefit to both? It doesn't make any sense to make life harder for either.
Supervisor Levins.
Um, I like better to restrict it for the restriction for Class B. Um, but would it also include, uh, can we also include all the things that they want to accommodate in that um uh special use permit with the initial signage, the 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 hostess or host being able to tell them all those great ideas. I mean, I think you're Supervisor Demont's brought up a good uh a good point is that, you know, one of my concerns was cell service, um, but it's not your responsibility whether I have cell service or not, and so um that is a a good point. It's not also your responsibility that if I'm gonna violate the law or not, which you know people are going to do as well. So those are all valid, good points, but ultimately, and of course, we do want this project. I think it's an excellent idea. But ultimately, our responsibility are gonna be the citizens' safety service and putting that burden on our EMS. And when you have one of your EMS personnel call and say, well, this is not gonna be a good idea, that is that is a concern still, but I would be okay with the Class B restrictions and the verbiage for the special use permit that we're going to try to accommodate all of these concerns. And then hopefully, it's not going to be mission.
Supervisor King.
Cause my concern is, would this satisfy the people that actually lives in that area?
Yeah, and that's another thing. I didn't get any, any, yeah, let's do this. Everybody was the same as I am. It's a good idea, but it's just a bad, bad situation for me.
This does come closest to the uh citizen that told you they should think about cabins and tents. Uh, because restricting it just to the Class Bs.
Disclosure, he doesn't live up. No, he just owns that property.
It's still an idea, a good idea is a good idea.
It is, it is. And it's gonna be done in phases, is that correct?
Yes, correct, yes. Uh, we we wanna start small to see what the demand is and um yeah, I mean, that phase four part on there is like, in our minds, like ten years out kinda thing. We we wanna do this uh slowly. Um, we're we're thinking phase one and two would happen more quickly and then phase three would be like, I don't know, many years down the line and phase four would be like many, many years down the line. I mean, the the demand would have to be there, would have to really be there because they're both phase three and phase four are very expensive to get to on the property and.
How many cabins and how many camping spots for phase one and two?
Um, phase one had um five cabins and one group campsite and six six campsites uh in phase one and then phase two, uh, the stress in my mind here, but I think it was um and I have to go, you know what? Okay, I I had it in the plan. I mean, um phase one, base two uh together were like um like fifty percent of the build outs and fifty-five percent of the build outs. Um.
So at least we'd be easing into it, I guess, a little bit for the first couple of years.
Well, I mean, to me, I I feel much better restricting it just to Class B and no larger. But I also think part of the amendment would absolutely have to have the signage. You know, you showed us that beautiful turnaround spot. That'd be a great place to put a sign saying, no vehicles longer than whatever. And see, what we're throwing out here is not even in our power. That's all VDOT.
Yeah.
And VDOT is gonna be in control of that, and I don't know how long that process would take you to get to to meet that. But that needs to be something, and then I've seen their warning signs that they have. Um, they're usually white with red lettering and black lettering on them and um they'll have the restrictions on there. But to do that, to basically say you're going to restrict movement past that point because you're gonna hit the railroad tracks, I think in office study, I'm not mistaken, on VDOT's part. So, I mean, when we we, when we want them to sign a road, uh, you Mount Tabor not having uh tractor trailers, that was, that took a year.
So the campsites aren't built yet. There's not even a road.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I want him, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want him to go away thinking that he was tricked into something. But signs would absolutely have to be part of the, in order for me to support it. But uh, yeah, I could live with that.
I could live with that.
So if you're willing to amend that.
So amend the motion to restrict RVs to Class B um and to uh work to post signage where allowed on the applicant's property, communicate via host to all reservations, as well as work with VDOT to post signage restricting on state roads.
I'll second that. I think that's.
Oh, you're fine. Um, do you always wanna put man to like when you want?
Before.
The signs in.
The signs need to be there before people can start renting spaces at the campground.
Well, you have him, you have him in an Ovita, just like Steve said. They could order him today and VDOT may not put him in two years. See what I'm saying?
Maybe their supervisor can help.
Yeah, I think we could push VDOT a little bit too.
Well, I don't know at what point in their plan that they were going to have these Class Bs coming in. Um, because all other vehicles would be able to get over the railroad track if they were to go that route.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna suggest is in that amendment, say, no Class Bs until the signage.
Thanks, yeah, I've, yeah, so I would amend my amendment and say that.
And I was seconded.
Yeah, but what about, what about the landline, virgin C use landline, would you want that in?
I'm, I I don't, if if it's necessary to move forward, yes. I'm, I, I don't, if, if it's necessary to move forward, yes, if not, I don't think it's.
Think it's a great idea.
So, I don't think that's necessary.
So I think that's where we're at.
For us, it's, it's not ideal, but I think we can live with.
Um, so I said amend the motion to restrict to Class B. Um, to have a camp host, um, adequately communicate. To any Class B reservations, the travel restrictions, uh, to Big Lake and Norris Run. To post signage on the applicant's property, um, at will, to not make turns, and then to work with VDOT. To get signage restricting RV access, um, before RV rentals can begin. And Mary seconded it.
So we have a motion in a second, and we've all discussed it, as far as you can discuss it.
And now I'm really excited about it.
Let's call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Temperance Jacaski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Yes, I, I think it would be, uh, it's our time for nine o'clock, ten minute break.
Got it. Awesome.
Business is new business. First up is ordinance amending, Chapter eight, Article three, erosion of sediment. Is there a motion?
Motion.
All right, we got a motion. Did you pick up a second? All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye. Next item is ordinance amending, Chapter eight, Article four. Is there a motion?
No. You're doing it pretty fast on your picture.
Is there any discussion? She's hearing none, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye. Next up is ordinance amending, Chapter ten, zoning.
Summon.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye. Next item is establish the PPT RA rate for twenty twenty-one.
Which is down to thirty-five point oh five percent.
Yep.
From one hundred percent to thirty-five percent. What's up with that?
I think that's something that we have no control over.
Like a hundred.
I did look like that too.
We do too.
Motion.
Second. You have a motion and a second, any discussion?
If ever wanted to be a hundred, your state taxes will go up to cover it.
Hey.
Hey.
Sorry.
Just saying.
Come on.
Sorry, sorry.
This doesn't sound like discussion, this sounds like. All right, hearing no more, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next item is adopt emergency operations plan.
Motion.
Any discussion?
We will provide you with a complete copy of the emergency operations plan for your review, but it is quite voluminous and I'll just say, I appreciate, we did not attach it to tonight's agenda because it's quite voluminous, but it has been thoroughly reviewed and it meets the requirements.
Can it be put in our library?
Yes ma'am.
Very good.
That's great.
All right. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next item, adopt national incident management system plan.
Motion.
Second. Thing I thought we would have done.
We probably did do this many moons ago, but we worked on the emergency operations plan and said, probably would be a good idea to reaffirm support for the NIMs plan too, so give those guys credit for that.
All right, well, hearing no more discussion, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
The next item up is the DEPAW community resources property tax extension. Is there a motion?
Summon.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. I never did receive the information that asked at gentleman's board. I would like to pull this off till I did get the information.
What information was that?
Yeah.
What they made? What their profits was.
The balance sheet.
Oh, their budget, yeah, yeah, that's right, did ask for that.
All right, can this be tabled?
I mentioned earlier today, there, there is no has to be addressed before the end of the year, so you've got time to get information, yes sir.
And is there a way to follow up with some folks?
I also wanted to add is that, looking at that, the requested the expenses, the invoices for DEPAW for the last two years, and I would like to also table this, that we can find out what that compares to other services. The cost accounting.
She made a bunch to table it.
And Todd did.
And Todd did too, so. If one wants to make the motion and the other one can second it.
Okay.
All right, if you have a new motion, is there any more discussion? Hearing none.
You've got to table.
If done on that motion, it will come back once the information is obtained.
Yes.
That'll stick up here.
Very good.
And I'll just add, I'm, I'm looking through their applications, some of that is in there, but we, we need to spend a little time making sure we've got it all together before we come back, so.
Okay. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye.
Six ayes to table.
All right, next one is the big enchilada. Appropriation for Montgomery County Public Schools, fiscal year twenty-one, year-end carryover.
Summon.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Is this for the CEOs they had abstaining?
And that's the next one.
Yeah, the next one.
This is just money they had left out.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, next item up is the appropriation, MCPS fiscal year twenty-one, year-end encumbrances carryover.
Summon.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, if you call a roll.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair for Ziegowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, that brings us to our reports. And of course, we always put one person in the hot seat first, that would be our county intern.
Yeah, just one quick update, the MOU, the board approved last meeting with the state. We just received yesterday, signed copy from the Commonwealth, so we have an executive agreement with them. Certainly the opiate now, so that's one good step. Next step will be in that process, once the, once they realize how many localities are involved, that the next step will be how many states will get involved and buy in on settlement, and then once there's enough there that, that those companies feel like they could have a universal settlement, then, you know, everything will be moving forward and hopefully will be receiving monies by first quarter next year. Or see how, how it progresses these next couple of months.
Very good.
It's good news, move forward.
All right, that it?
Yes it is.
All right, next up, county administrator.
Couple of quick things this evening, I recognized Scott and Emily earlier for the ENS stormwater, also want to give a shout out to Artie, he's provided some good guidance, some information on that as well, appreciate the help on that. The only other thing I was going to mention is, went up to the VACO meetings last Thursday, trip up, wasn't bad, trip back was nasty, but got some good information at the finance committee meeting, matter of fact, the three o'clock meeting, I think Barry was a part of, had to run us out of the room because we were still talking. I sent a big packet of information to the board today from some of the information I got from that session, it was very good, a lot of good information. State's got a lot of money left over, let's just hope inflation doesn't create some challenges for us going forward, that's the big problem. That's all I have.
Very good. All right, next up is the board reports, and I'm going to go down the list, starting with Supervisor King.
Go ahead and report, I do appreciate everybody working towards the campsite. April's done good work there, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Supervisor Blevins.
I know reports, just wanted to congratulate all of our volunteer fire and rescue that we recognized this evening and just to again extend our great sincere appreciation for our volunteer fire and rescue with a population of close to a hundred thousand. We do depend on their dedication, training and commitment and again, just congratulations. Some of these gentlemen had sixty and fifty years of service and that is a true testament for their sacrifice dedication and the type of citizens that we have here in Montgomery County.
Supervisor Thomas.
A couple of things, and I'll be brief. Supervisors Blevins, Vice Chair Fitz and myself all were able to be present for the summit that they co-hosted, where statewide candidates for office were able to give some of their platform issues and talk a little bit about what they want to do if elected, and were able to entertain some audience questions, so it gave some really good information for those campaigns. In the afternoon that day, I attended two of the subcommittee meetings, I attended the environment agriculture and the energy subcommittees, the energy subcommittee focused quite a bit on solar and large scale or utility scale solar and some of the impacts that that is having on communities, and so VACO is working really hard to help lobby the general assembly, it's kind of the you know, as a I guess we, we advocate or want, we talk a lot about wanting renewable energy and solar wind, things like that, but then there are some unintended consequences to localities. When you offset some of the taxes to incentivize, then it has locality-based impacts, and so VACO is really going to lobby hard to advocate on behalf of counties to be able to capture some of the revenue in the form of taxes from utility scale solar. And on a much more fun topic, this is mine, so nobody can have it, but this is a Huckleberry Trail map, I don't know if anybody has seen that these are new to the community, the Friends of the Huckleberry put this map together, it is a beautiful map, it covers not only the Huckleberry, but I think it's sixty miles in trails, so the whole Poverty Creek Trail system is covered. A lot of neighborhood trails in both the towns are covered, so little walking trails that are lesser known, that may not be advertised on any type of larger scale are in this map. This is a really great resource for trail users, for people that just like to get out to walk, or for people that like to get out and do some more intense hiking. I would really recommend picking one of these up, these are ten dollars, which is why you cannot have it, because I paid for it, it's mine. These are ten dollars, they're available at East Coasters, Rising Silo Brewery, Runabout Sports, I know they're adding more retail locations for the map throughout Montgomery County, and I think they were also talking about adding some of them in Roanoke County locations. When you buy this trail map, ten dollars total, five dollars is a donation to the Friends of the Huckleberry for future trail builds, like buildings. So they've paid a considerable amount to have these maps developed, but then they're going to retain half of the purchase price in future trail development, which is really cool. So I definitely would advise picking these up if you can.
Good commercial.
This is your map, so these are tear resistant and water resistant, it looks like just a paper map, that these are, you could stick them in your pocket. Yeah, even if you're sweating a whole bunch, it won't ruin your map, so.
Sweater. All right, very good, thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
No report.
Supervisor Bone.
Oh, she's not here. She's on my list. I know I have to.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Okay, well, attending the VACO meeting, I'll talk, well, I went to the education steering committee meeting and also the human, health and human services line, just to, you know, see what was happening. But what I thought was really interesting was at the VACO board meeting, we got really into this whole thing about the state not funding public education, and boy, did people have a chance to vent. And everyone is on the same page, and especially noted was the fact that Fairfax, and they're not the only ones, because there was a county in far southwest, they could not even get the state money for their teacher salaries because it would have been a hundred million dollars that they would have had to put in for their share. So during the discussion, it was real interesting, someone, I can't remember who it was, April, maybe you do, came up with the idea that we need to have like sort of an invoice or a bill, so like when the state gives us the money and then we have to pony up, we have a bill that we can show our citizens, this is how much you all, we are having to pay to match this.
In order to even get.
Yeah, and it's just ridiculous, and so when people got started, it was actually for me, because I just sort of watched the whole, I think I made one comment, but it's what I've been on my soapbox about since nineteen seventy-eight, but anyway, before, probably you weren't born in April. But anyway, it was really cool, so that is a big bone of contention, and the other thing I told Craig that was very interesting is VACO is developing a leadership model. They've been asked by localities if they could develop some kind of leadership model that people could use for their staffs, county staffs. So they're looking into that and they're trying to work on developing a model for that. So it was, all of the meetings were good, you know, that everything, I think the summit went really well, so we'll keep our fingers crossed about the annual meeting, hopefully that will be in person.
You did, did a storm on that, about.
I did, we both did, yeah, we did that.
Yeah. It was like two different storms.
Mary and I ran into each other at the same gas station.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Last, certainly not least, I unfortunately missed my VACO transportation committee meeting, but that day was, there was a reason for that, it was a very busy day for me. Angie and I spoke at the chamber leadership in the morning. Later that day, I had a solid waste authority meeting, and one of the things we discussed was solar. Something that they've been wanting to do there at the closed landfill, because there's really not a whole lot you can do with a closed landfill. Can't put a ballpark or a health club there, it's just not conducive, so other localities have done that, and we had a little presentation from CHA, and it sounds very promising. Twelve to fifteen megawatts.
Hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty acres, right?
It, there's, there's, there's a lot of land there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the county owns some land next door where there's no landfill too, so the topic was, maybe the members of the authority would like to participate in some way. You know, we all have talked, I know you have, April, about doing some kind of a project, this may be a good one, but we're in the early stages and we're looking at it, and the administration has the information, so hopefully we'll go forward with this. There's several different ways to approach it, you can have the solar company basically foot the bill. Of course, there's payback on that, or you could have, there's grants, a lot, several different ways to approach it, so I'm really excited about that getting started, because that's a good use of that land. Also, this past Saturday, we had our tomato festival down in Shawsville, it was pretty successful. We didn't get rained on, but we sure got beat on by the sun, because it was hot, but a good time was had by all, and the grilled fried green tomatoes are always delicious.
Good turnout.
Very good turnout, they're running out of parking spaces down there, but yeah, it was very, very good time. And the last thing I wanted to mention, and I think I've mentioned this in the past, I am involved in a historic program that's going to be held down in Allegheny Springs on October the seventeenth, and it's called American Revolution on the Frontier. There's a home down there that's going into the century program, Century Farm program, and it turns out it was owned back in the seventeen hundreds by the Crockett family, and they had three sons, all served as colonels in either the Continental Army or Virginia militia, and so a historical marker, I'm going to be that is going up there. On that date will be unveiled, and I've been asked to participate in a small way, and I'm glad to do it, kind of follows up on the earlier historical event that happened down at Fathering Gate on the Ellison straightaway, so a lot of history down below the mountain, I'm sure there's probably just as much on top, but I look forward to do that, hope that maybe if you all get the opportunity, you might be able to attend it.
Are you going to send us a time and all that?
Yes, when, soon as we develop the flyer for it and get some other things nailed down, we had a meeting this past week, and we're going to have another one next month, so hopefully it'll be a good event and we won't get rained out, but if we do, we've got Meadowbrook right down the road, we can all move inside, so we've got an alternative plan. That's all I have, if there's nothing else.